David from Cloud Nine is here, and it takes basically five minutes. If you come in, he can, he can set it up in five minutes.
He gets here at around eight forty, eight forty-five.
Yeah.
And he's here until around two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll come in the morning then.
Yeah.
This Thursday?
Every Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, because I have to after this.
Yeah.
I think they just need to set it up from the back end so that it recognizes the Town of Gibson's and all the.
Okay, thanks.
All okay, Andrew?
Good, great.
Okay, I'm good. Send me a signal if you need my help while you got your, you got your swag. Just remember the last five minutes.
Well, my really, really, you got to have all these.
Yeah.
So you got, I gave you the agenda? Yeah.
Yes, I got them right here.
You're deserving me a counsel.
Do it, you're gonna get more pressure responses from you for it.
Yeah, I think he's really nice, basically.
Like the, sucks to be sure we're like that.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to do that so I could connect with you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just leave it like that.
I guess we're okay because that is the agenda.
Or I mean. It's the finance section.
No, he's coming too.
That's nice.
He will be here as well.
What do you think of the shades, Andrew?
Very cool.
Yeah, I like them.
Yeah.
And the hoodie as well.
That's gonna be exciting.
Yeah, so.
Thank you so much, yeah. Part of the team. I mean, it's been extraordinary to see.
Yeah, it's just.
That's kind of fun.
Yeah.
And then.
Um, do you know who they're, my friend that, my friend that cast.
Yeah.
These are various. Validation years or retaliation.
They might, there's still, like, it's still safety from last time here. I think probably two of them.
I would be like, so like. I used to always joke that I would just like block it out. Like, I don't know what I need, just don't know what happened. I'm just like fully laughing. Everyone would be like laughing, they're like, he's crazy.
Oh my god, it's coming with literal blinking.
It's like a little troll when you're.
Well, now things are looking nice.
Yeah.
Graduating from the work of security.
Feel like I'm being chased by a police leader. Somewhat. Good luck with that trade, isn't it?
Okay, it's actually the way, I mean, we've started it out in the first hundred years, right? So, anyone else?
Yeah.
The way it's communicating.
It's good luck, Charlie.
I am calling the committee of the whole meeting of March fourth, twenty twenty-five of the Town of Gibson's to order at one P M. And we're honored to be gathered on the traditional territories of the Scomish Nation. Uh, today is focusing on the budget, uh, specifically water, waste and sewer rates. And, uh, we're ready to approve the agenda, moved by Councillor Kroll, seconded by Councillor Thompson, all those in favor. Motion carries. And, uh, I'm gonna hand over this meeting to the Director of Finance. Who's been, uh, preparing, preparing, uh, uh, very, uh, thoughtful and substantive reports for us.
Uh, thank you, Mayor White. Turning to the first staff report for waste rates. Um, I'll, I'll go through these reports and when it's helpful, I will, uh, also visit the schedules with the committee. So, um, the first thing about delivering the waste services is we budget and, and pay for them on a full cost recovery, a full cost recovery basis. So we need to raise money to pay the annual operating expenses, any current or future capital expenditures. When we know what those costs are, that's our target required revenues. And then we have various tools, taxation, uh, charges, rates to raise those revenues. Uh, in terms of waste, uh, the one big event, um, that impacts on the town over the next five years is that, uh, we have renewed the contract with our, uh, external contract. There's Salish and A J M. And their rates over twenty-five to twenty-nine, uh, are escalating at approximately three point four percent per year. Uh, in reviewing and preparing the waste budget for twenty-five and future years, uh, staff found that we do have sixty-eight thousand in, uh, direct waste service costs uh, that haven't been included in this budget before and have been, uh, paid for using general municipal taxes. Uh, turning to the second page of the report. That's page six of forty-one. Uh, this results, um, in a proposed rate increase of nine percent in twenty twenty-five to fund, uh, that's sixty-eight thousand. Beyond that, the town race, waste rates are projected to increase, uh, by three percent a year over twenty-six, twenty-nine. So it is a, a one-time adjustments that is being proposed. Um, and I do wish to update the second, uh, paragraph there, the comparison, to note that, um, in fact, Sea Shelt has settled on a zero percent increase for their waste for twenty twenty-five. Uh, although the other general range for many other places of six to twelve percent still stands. Now, without getting into the schedule, there is one item that, that, that came up and, and is worth considering from a, a strategic perspective. I mean, um, our waste costs aren't just the costs that the town handles. They're all, also the waste costs that the S C R D handles for everyone on the coast. And the town's share of their work is six hundred and sixty-one thousand, uh, which, sorry, is six hundred and seventy thousand, which actually exceeds the work the town does, it's six hundred and sixty thousand. And almost all of the, uh, regional district money goes towards looking after the landfill. The actual tipping fees that we pay for dumping at the landfill total fifty-eight thousand, a very small amount. But one of the things that we have learned is that there is still an awful lot of recycled materials and organics materials that is being delivered from, uh, waste picked up in Gibson's to the landfill. Um, this is applicable to every area municipality on the coast. So a suggestion is made in this report, although it's not in the budget, to add six thousand dollars there for some kind of continual annual, uh, educational programming from the town to remind people that there's still a lot of work left to do. Um, to reduce, uh, waste that shouldn't be going to the landfill. And on strictly, uh, from a monetary perspective, it's just so expensive that anything that can be done to reduce it is, uh, is, is good for all. So let's go and have a quick look at that budget schedule. Right by me. One too far. So there's, there's two pages. The first one has, uh, the additional information. You'll see at the very top there, we've got a line item for information. And that's what, uh, S C R D is requisitioning town taxpayers, uh, each year. Uh, the town's share is between twelve and thirteen percent. Although you can see that, um, the total being allocated to the town every year is escalating, although not hugely. The second, uh, so, sorry, to finish that thought. And so you'll see in twenty twenty-five, they'll be requisitioning six hundred and seventy thousand. And down at the bottom is the town's own waste budget, six hundred and sixty-one thousand. So it's a huge part of the mix. The second section of the first page just lays out, um, costs to be allocated to garbage or organics. And it's new. Uh, you can see in the first orange there that we didn't do this in twenty-four or prior years. And in orange, we have the various line items. But I, I think the best way of thinking about it is it's not that the town, uh, doesn't deliver waste. We contract outsiders to do the direct operations part. But much of the customer service, all of the billing, all of the, uh, coordinating liaising with the contractors is all handled by town staff, and that's where this allocated time comes from. In other words, we wouldn't be able to run the waste service without these two components, the town staff and the contractor. It's just that we don't have town staff and equipment that are actually going out there and doing collections. Um, there isn't anything, um, specific of note, uh, that, that I'd like to point, uh, you toward in garbage and go, organics in terms of, of the money. The second page gets a bit more into rates. And just to share the methodology there a little bit. If you're looking at the top, uh, section under proposed budget and you see revenues, garbage fees, those are the total costs we're trying to recover through, uh, through the rates, two hundred ninety thousand, six hundred seventy-three. And then just a little bit lower, we're trying to recover, uh, costs of three hundred and seventy thousand for the organics. And the way we do that is, uh, we have, um, I'd identified numbers of people in our system that we bill. So when you look at these billings, there are the numbers for, there's twenty-three hundred bills to go out for, uh, garbage and twenty-three hundred to go out for organics. So it's, the methodology is simply dividing those into the total costs to be recovered, gets you the, the annual rate necessary. Um, and then the, the rest of the schedule just helps you get a feel for what's going on with the percentage changes. And right down at the very bottom, you'll see, okay, garbage and organics. The combined percentage change for the whole year is nine percent. The total cost for the whole year is two eighty-seven. And then, um, in our bylaw, we would have a six-month fee of one forty-three. If I could take you now back to the report and its recommendations, uh, perhaps I can clarify a couple of items there. The recommendation, uh, follows the proposal of recovering the nine percent in those costs that were missed in the past in one go. It provides an option to add on the six thousand, which doesn't change the over all nine percent increase. And then it provides an alternative, and it's a little awkwardly, uh, worded. Essentially what this means is, well, we've, um, corrected our cost accounting. That belongs in the budget, whether we choose to recover it or not. However, um, this alternative suggests, okay, this is great, but we would like to have the rates calculated without this extra sixty-eight thousand this year, and we'll take it under consideration to catch up in future years. And I don't know whether, uh, the committee is interested, but I should flag another way too, which is, uh, the committee might be full in a, of, in, in, in full agreement about recovering all the costs. But might feel that since it's a change we're making that we should have done in the past, we don't necessarily want to do it all in one go, so fine, recover half of it in twenty twenty-five and recover the next bit in twenty-six, smooth it out over a few years. Uh, so I just wanted to also flag that that's an option. And that's, those are all the notes or comments that I wanted to bring to the committee's attention on this report. And I'm open to questions. Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question on that, that point. Um, and I'm sorry if you mentioned this, but I'm just not seeing the number in front of me. I mean, uh, residential monthly rate is pretty solid. I think it applies to every home, it's the same number, right?
Yes.
So what are we looking at is in terms of a dollar increase here with, uh, by go, going for the full, you know, recovering the sixty-eight thousand? I mean, it looks like a high percentage increase, but it's pretty, I mean, especially as far as our other utilities go, this one's pretty low. Like, I, I don't know if it's gonna be a big.
Mayor White, if we look at the
Yeah.
bottom of the
Yeah.
the second schedule. Uh, where are we? That's page ten of forty-one of the package. And, uh, we all go right down to the very bottom. We have the twenty-three annual fee combined is two twenty-five. The twenty-four was two sixty-three. And then the proposed twenty-five would be two eighty-seven. So you're, you're right, in terms of strictly dollars, it's not a, yeah, it's not a, it sounds impressive percentage wise.
Twenty-four dollars we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah. To, to, in order to correctly, uh, subsume this sixty-eight thousand dollars that's been in taxes, so, which has to happen at some point. Okay. Uh, Councillors, Councillor DeAndrati.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question regarding communication and auditing. Uh, I'm assuming that the auditing that is being done at this point is a full truck, right? Not by household? Or, that would be nice to know.
The auditing's done at the S C R D, so we're not the experts on that. I don't think, I mean, it, any of us can, I'd, I'd look up those reports. I don't know when the last one was, it's been a, two or three years, I think, maybe it was two years ago.
Mayor White, you're correct, it was relatively recent. Um, and I did scan through the report and read a couple of bits. Uh, yeah, they're, they're doing statistical sampling in terms of trucks showing up at the landfill. And then they're making sure that they've got some sampled from every area and every municipality. And yeah, they went through the whole truck and took photos and all of that stuff and counted everything very scientifically.
I, I recall when that report came to the S C R D, I, I actually had, I shared excerpts of it with council in my, in my, uh, mayor's report. So that's probably somewhere in our agenda, agendas, but it can be looked up too. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, uh, obviously I support the communication, I think it's very important. But what I feel, I mean, I know how, I know some people don't have cars and they have problem taking recycling to, um, to the depot. And, but maybe some of them don't even put in a garbage because they have, they are aware. But I know people who have cars and they produce a huge amount of garbage, and I know they are putting recycling. So my question is, I know communication is good, but I suspect some people, they may not do because they don't know, but I think s- many people or some people choose not to do. So my question, and, but because of the huge impact on the landfill, I wonder if following this communication, we should have some sort of audit, if it's possible. Maybe we have to contract someone to do individual auditing because how, uh, I think some, a lot of people will pay for, you know, for, you know, the maybe responsibility of people. Because in my household, there's no physical garbage. I can't survive, I think, three months without garbage because I recycle everything. Our depots have so much recycling, it's incredible. So.
Um, yeah, a couple of things there. I wanted to ask about, you have got, oh, got you, Councillor Kroll, but I wanted to just add to that. The communications, um, and I wanted to get the, an audit idea too, but communications, what's that gonna look like if we're putting six thousand dollars more? Is that hiring a consultant to do communications? And I don't know, like, why, why does it need to be beyond getting the message out more in our current budget of, you know, just trying to get the message out to residents in our current channels? And, and how, how does that look? Like, is it a, do we, are we hiring a consultant?
Uh, Mayor White, I asked, um, our communications coordinator for what it would cost to generate one activity. And then, and the minimum cost was six, seven thousand dollars. And we, we didn't get much further than that. I explained what it was about. In terms of our efforts through the website and the contractor doing pickups and stuff, it's fairly passive. I mean, the information's there if you go look for it. This is about doing something that would attract some attention.
So are we talking Facebook advertising or something, or, 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 or print advertising, or?
Yeah, I get the majority of the costs would be for printing, advertising and signage or stickers if we needed those such things. If we wanted to do a consultant, it'd be considerably more, but this is assuming we do all in-house. But this is a very like targeted, strategic campaign. Whereas at the moment, it's sort of peppered out throughout the year for Facebook and free communication channels.
Okay, um, I've got a few councillors who want to talk, but I still wanted to just follow up on Councillor DeAndrati's comments about the concept of an audit, like doing our own audit. I, I don't know if that would be really helpful if we're already getting the, I mean, we can get bags audited at the S, the, the landfill's already happening, it's their responsibility. And we're, I don't want it to be paying for things double too, that's always the pitfall with the S C R D. Like, if we're paying for, we, we were already, as, as, as you point out, we're sending most of our money here to the S C R D. And if they're doing an audit, like, I don't know if, if we tax more to do our own audit, we're kind of double taxing people. Um, but I guess the question though is, instead of an audit, like, we, we did pass, I think, bylaw amendments some years ago, uh, prohibiting people from throwing recycling into their garbage. So is there, is, could it be more of a stepping up enforcement? Uh, because I think right now it's probably just more, if a bear gets into somebody's garbage and there happens to be cardboard in there, then maybe we might enforce, but otherwise, we're not doing like spot checks, I think. So I just want to ask staff about how that works.
Yes, Mayor White, it, there's, there's really three levels. The, the first level is the educational, the outreach. The second level is our contractor, when they observe egregious, clearly they know they're not picking up regular solid waste, they have stickers. And in the contract where the stickers are having no influence whatsoever, they are then supposed to escalate it by reporting it to us. And then we are supposed to escalate it here to bylaw. Uh, because both S C R D and the town have bylaws that spell out quite a bit of information about what thou shalt not do. And, um, I believe the methodology there is, um, again, engagement and encouragement. And then finally, last step, although I've not read anything in the bylaws that says here's the fine. But I believe that would, that, I, I, I believe that's where we're going because the landfill's becoming such a challenge for the coast.
I'm gonna venture to guess we don't prob, we probably don't dole out a lot of those fines and all those steps.
None that I've heard of.
And also just for clarity, I think for everybody, this, the, the whole stick, when, if, if the contractor's putting a sticker on the, then, then that means they're also not picking up, I guess, I assume. There, if there's a bunch of pizza boxes sticking out of a, um, a garbage can, they'll put a sticker on it and they're not picking it up. I, I mean, that's, that's, that's impracticality, I think, yeah. Uh, C A O.
Through you, Ms. Mayor, I just wanted to shed a little bit more light about the relationship between any type of audit and education. We used that approach at the beginning of, the first year that we launched the organics, where we did a, we had an arrangement with a contractor to do an actual audit, like pull a full truck out and inspect everything that was there. Then we targeted communication on a weekly basis to the residents and saying, hey, coffee cups or those types of things, straws. So that's how, so we used that approach and it was targeted and it was limited. Uh, and it was done in-house as well. And that, that was quite effective, uh, I would say. And, uh, the, the, the broader, um, every few years audits, it's something that ideally we'll continue to work with the regional district on to do those audits, they're helpful to us. And you're right, the last full audit, uh, was done quite a few, it's sort of a waste selection or some kind. The title for that, but that's, uh, that's a pretty expensive process. Uh, I mean, the message seems to be the same, there's still a lot of unnecessary items ending up in the landfill that should be recycled. I guess that's the message, um, in some ways.
Got Councillor Kroll next.
Um, thank you, Mayor White. And I, I think you sort of partially got into it on, as you've mentioned, I recall when we brought in the bylaw, well, certainly in our last term, there was mechanism for people being fined for putting recyclables into the, um, the waste stream, um, other than organic. And it is challenging, I appreciate what Councillor DeAndrati was saying for people who have issues. But I know in neighborhoods, like, you know, I've taken our neighbors' recycling to them, to the depot. It's, you know, for a while they didn't have a car, and I just said to them, I said, hey, you know, we recycle in this community. If you've got your stuff, I'll take it. And I think there's a lot of that goes on. Um, it's not just every individual has to, you know, check to the recycle depot. And quite frankly, I love the recycle depot. I see more people at the recycle de- depot than I do if I go out dining in a local restaurant. So it's, um, an, a wonderful opportunity to catch up with people and they have wonderful book bins. So it's, it's a win-win. But I think there is the need, um, for perhaps a few knuckles to be wrapped, um, with respect to people putting stuff in that shouldn't be going. Um, Lisa can to attest on how much I spend on garbage tags because of cats. And we've actually gone to a cheap, a lightweight kitty litter, but it hasn't helped. But, so I think, you know, I, I totally support the communication thing, I think people do need to be reminded.
Councillor Lumley. Yeah, I, through the mayor, thank you. Um, I was gonna follow up on, because this goes back to, I've, I've mentioned probably on a number of occasions, like, like, my press, my, I would prefer to go like a user rate fee, you know, like almost, I know we can't do that, but, um, is there any appetite to differentiate between, because you and I have talked about this too. Is, I don't put my garbage out all the time because I don't have enough garbage. So, but at, when you're just charging these rates on who knows, a number of these people, it sets a, it's, the system's imbalanced because now these people are, are paying, um, well, they're paying for a service they're not using or the, that they don't need. Um, and I know a lot of that goes on with taxes, I'm not naive to that, but, um, I just wondered if there was, um, you know, I don't know if it could be done, but, I mean, the size of the garbage can and maybe a different color, maybe differentiating between, because I know the people, there are people on my street, I know that, um, they have massive garbage cans and they're, they put them out all the time and they're full. So I don't know how much auditing's going on, but, I mean, I don't know how anyone could create that much garbage. And what I don't see on their driveway, a lot of times is an organics bin. So unless you're not eating, I'm sure that they're, you know, they're eating. So it just means, I, that's all I was questioning was whether or not there's, there's a better weighted system for people that, you know, it's almost like punishing the people that might not be buying into this, but, and rewarding people that, you know, are making an attempt to help out with the landfill and the environment. I don't know, I mean, it's just my thought.
No, it's always challenging, especially at the, the financial level to, because there's still an overall cost of providing the service. Because there's a, I mean, you've got, you've got to pay for the truck for a certain amount of hours going around. And for the, the same amount of, of, of full, all the, all the waste that ends up at the landfill. And so to, um, if, like, we do the opt-out for organics and that hasn't sunk the program, but if, if you gave, started to give people. but if you gave, started to give people options of not, you know, not of paying half for, like, a monthly service or something, then I think, then I think the rest of the rates would have to go up or something to pay for the service. I mean, that's, I don't think I need to go to William for that, that's just math, right? So that's the trick. That's the challenge of doing that, looking at it that way.
That's my point, that the people that aren't doing it pay the increase and, or pay the balance. That's kind of my point. I'm sure that there are people, again, I get it, it's how we operate, but there are people, like, maybe councillor DeAndrati and maybe myself, maybe you, that if there was a drop-up for your garbage, then you would probably just take it to the drop-off, and there'd be no garbage trucks rolling around. I mean...
Like, this came up at the SCRD in that intergovernmental budget meeting that happened. We talked about this, and that's what I said. I think there's a lot of people in the Gibsons area who use a recycling depot a lot, who would be happy with a kind of drop-off option, but then, then the challenge is you still have to pay for the service somehow.
My other, my other point, just even a follow-up to this, it's all connected, I guess, but, and I know the, I know the CFO's numbers spread into 2029, but, I mean, I don't know, I was just, my question was, I don't know if anybody has any idea regarding the landfill and where that sits. I mean, I guess that's a regional district question, but would you know, Mayor?
No, because we're waiting for a couple of, there are a couple of initiatives that are being looked at right now that could extend the life of the landfill. One is moving the contact pond, which is happening, and that's extending the life by a couple of years, I think. And then there's, there's a further study that's being done right now that hasn't come back to the SCRD, which is looking at vertical expansion of the landfill rather than horizontal expansion. And that's, that's a big cost, but it's also got potential to extend the life of the landfill, and the report's just not back yet. I think maybe the director of infrastructure has more on that, or put his hand up on something anyway.
Through you, Mayor, I was just going to indicate, four years is the latest press release, is that the life of the landfill will be extended by the contact pond. So four years, at which point, I think we'd be looking, they'd be looking for their alternative.
So we're at four years right now, but the vertical expansion report hasn't come in. But there's also no decision on that. The vertical expansion's also going to come with a big cost, so. We've got councillor Thompson next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It was a continuation of the conversation regarding our user numbers decreasing, is my question. And is that based on changes we made to the garbage use per household for secondary units? I'm referring to both garbage users in 2023 to 2025 and for organics.
Okay, why are those numbers going down? Do we know? Yes. Okay. That is to do with treating one residence, one dwelling as one customer.
It's just regarding the investment into communication and just, I'd like to have a better understanding of what that messaging would be in that communication. Is it, because education and enforcement are two very different approaches.
They are, yeah. And I might, I might actually be more inclined to enforcement personally, because we, I feel like we've done a lot of education. I feel like it's fairly well-known out there that we have a recycling depot and you're supposed to use it. And I think, to councillor DeAndrati's points earlier, I think there are people who know full well that they're just, but I get it, too, like, they've got this service. It's like, we make it easy, you just take it away. So they'll fill up their, they'll fill up their garbage can, and if they're never bothered by it, no one ever comes and says, hey, you're not supposed to be dumping, filling this full of pizza boxes. They'll do it. So, I mean, I do think there's a, the council should consider options of stepping up enforcement in some way, but, you know, again, I don't know how that looks, because it's, I think there's a balance, because some people are going to find it intrusive. There's no doubt about it. If you start doing spot checks in people's garbage and show up and going through their garbage, that's not, I wouldn't actually, you know, I don't, I don't think our bylaw enforcement staff are necessarily going to want to do that. We'd have to talk, they're not here today, but it'd be a good conversation to have with them. Councillor DeAndrati?
Thanks, Mayor. I think when I mentioned, when I mentioned auditing, individual was exactly for enforcement. I would like to see this education really targeted, like, okay, the problem is serious, we're going to start fining, that's the communication, and we do for a period, but then we have to have a mechanism. And regarding, like, invasion of privacy, I'm not sure how to do, but I'm sure we can get a contractor or somebody that can do, because I don't know the way we're going to get out of that.
Now, there was the old, there's an idea that's been kicking around in the town for about a decade, and I think the last council had a motion or two about it, too, but it's clear bags. Remember that? And I know some, I mean, I think Halifax or somewhere introduced that years ago, and I, but I don't know how much has been picked up, but it's just like, you have transparent bags, and makes it easy, makes it easy to see. And it all, I mean, I think it also, just in the behavior point, it's like, if, if you know you're, you're going to be putting out a transparent bag that's clearly showing it's full of recyclables, that people are going to be less likely to do it. So that, I don't know, I thought the last council had something about, talking about them, but I don't know whatever happened to it. So I'm just going to see if anyone remembers where that initiative was at, like, if it was explored and it was found out that it wasn't feasible, or, go to the CAO.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think my recollection is, the issue is that there are people actually required to use their garbage can because of wildlife attractants, and so it's not always feasible to have a clear vessel or bag in this case. I run into issues with birds and wildlife-type things, but that's my recollection of why there wasn't done, was more related to that.
Councillor Croll, and then I'll go to councillor DeAndrati.
Thank you, Mayor White. Going back to the clear bag thing, if, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, you cannot put garbage out in just a bag, period. It has to be in a bear-proof container, it's part of our bylaw. So the liner within that container could in fact be a clear bag. The availability of them and the cost of them may be an issue, because, you know, the black garbage bag or the green garbage bag, you see them everywhere. But I know when I've gone seeking clear bags for, specifically for recycling, like, cans, like pop cans and things like that for different events, I've been doing, sourcing the clear bags is a little more challenging, and they are more expensive. But I think it is a good idea, because, you know, nobody, bylaw officer or contract person, they're not going to want to be going through people's garbage. But to be able to pull a bag out of a bear-proof garbage can and look and say, oh, look, there's the pizza box, there's the tin can, there's the glass catcher bottle, tilt, sticker, warning, potential fine if it continues, you know, but I think, you know, we're not going to get a enforcement officer for $6,000. So I think it's worth doing, you know, another media blitz, and maybe, you know, look into this clear bag idea. It's, I think it's got huge, because people are going to react, oh my God, my garbage can be seen, I'm going to be way more conscious of what I put out.
Yeah, I think we're also not going to make a huge policy shift today that's not in this report, but, but yeah, the, I mean, I think councillors are bringing up these questions to look to the future, to how can we, how can we change things in the future? I mean, we, we have been a leader on solid waste diversion and recycling over the years, going back a couple decades by now, so, the early days of the recycling depot, so, and well, and even before that. So I think we need to keep thinking about how we can be a leader. So I think that's all we're trying to do, rather than maybe completely turn the approach on its head today, but maybe looking, looking at the clear bag, that transparent bag option is something we should reconsider. I think councillor DeAndrati had her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to finish to complement this topic. And I think even though the garbage, the transparent garbage can could be more expensive, but if you really don't, don't put, sorry?
Bag.
What did I say?
Garbage can.
Sorry, bag.
I just don't want, I don't want people to...
Of course, no, thank you. The garbage bag, it's more expensive. If you don't have too much garbage, you can wait, you know, a month or more. And I think it's important, because the problem with the landfill is too serious, we need to solve. So I don't, I don't want to even contemplate the cost, and we can even, you know, maybe suggest some, who knows, in the future, more people will bring here to the coast and will sell cheaper from a company. But anyways, I think it's a great idea, and I look forward to having a discussion.
I mean, it's supply and demand, too. I mean, so many different things are happening in waste reduction and nationally and provincially in terms of moving away from plastic cutlery, for example. So I'm pretty sure that, you know, wooden cutlery that we see all the places, hopefully it's being mass-produced by now, because there's so much demand for it, and it's not as expensive as it once was, when it was really hard to find. So I would hope the same thing would apply to transparent bags if more municipalities were to take this approach. And it's maybe even something that we could push for being adopted provincially if we were to start it. But I'm sure some have in BC. I mean, this isn't a completely new idea. And so, I mean, this is something we could ask staff to look into, I think. But we have, I think we probably have a recommendation for this report, and we could add something about this, researching transparent bags, too, if anyone's interested. Councillor Croll?
Thank you, Mayor White. I want, I was wanting to move the recommendation with the option that the $6,000 be included. And I don't know if you want to add and then further that staff look into the possibility of clear bags that might provide better enforcement of the bylaw?
Okay. Yeah, I think we'll take that, including the, do we have some, does staff have that wording at the end for the addition? How about, okay, we've got that. So that's understood by everybody? Any discussion? Councillor DeAndrati?
Thank you. I just have a question. With the communication piece, is it something that's coming back to council? Because the way I'm seeing it, it's a little bit more ultimatum to people, and I just want to have a sense, or are we going to have a workshop and discuss this on the workshop?
No, no. I think, I don't, you know, yeah, unless there's a lot of demand for that, but I haven't heard it from anyone else. I didn't, I haven't picked that up, that we need a workshop on, like, us setting the direction for the communications. I think probably staff has a good idea on that. But if you have some thoughts on how that should look, say them now.
Well, I think we have a system of fine, but apparently it's not really happening. So I would like, you know, that people understand that this will be enforced. So, I mean, it could be, it could have two types of communication, just like, please do it, because we have a problem, or just say, please do it, we have a problem, and we will enforce. So I would like to see the piece of enforcement, and even the deadline, you know, saying, okay, since this, like, from this day, you know, random check will be done or something, or whatever it is that we're going to do. Otherwise, I think we're not going to really address, we need to be aggressive to address this.
Well, that would require further direction from council, I think. That would, that would be, that's not just communications. That would be to say, we're going to, we want our bylaw enforcement staff, who aren't actually here today, to start doing random checks. And, I mean, I think we're trying to pursue that angle by looking at the transparent bags as the first step, so that would be a different infrastructure services manager.
Thank you, Mayor White. Just a thought from the staff table, that the collection bid that we received from the contractor, they clearly have a lot of experience and knowledge and likely insight into collection, and I would suggest that it may be some benefit to reaching out to the contractor as well, and to discuss, through their experience, maybe they have some ideas about what the best methods for auditing might be. So just thinking that there might be an opportunity to review with them, discuss options, and the best, like, what's going to be the best bang for our buck, so to speak, as far as how we're going to approach the auditing, and that could potentially come back for another conversation. Just wanted to suggest that they would be a pretty key player in that conversation.
Councillor DeAndrati, did you want to make an amendment or to just add or other options after the clear bags in this addition to the motion? Does that work in the wording? Looking at whoever's, yeah?
Tell me what you want to add.
I'm just, I'm suggesting or other options, just to give, give staff some direction to look at some other things than just the clear bags.
I have a suggestion.
Okay, maybe someone else.
So, and that, before the communication, you know, goes to the public, that we meet with the bylaw officer and we get input from the company, and then we decide, because I think it's important to, we're going to have one type of communication. I don't think it makes sense to put some type of communication, then decide to reinforce and have a second round, unless this is the goal. So I'd rather, you know, we approve the communication, because we want the communication, but the, how the communication is going to be spelled, I would like to have, I think it's wise, I agree with the director, to have this understanding from the bylaw officer and from the company, and then we are clear how we can approach that.
I don't agree. I think a lot of strong communications can be made without, because I don't think we're in that position to know the next steps yet. We're asking staff to look at, look at the transparent bags option, and that's going to happen simultaneously to these communications going out. And the communications, I mean, I think, I think it's, they'll, they'll say, we have a bylaw saying that, you, just, just so everybody knows, you can't throw your recycling out, like, it's, it's against the bylaw, and there is a fine for it. I mean, we don't have the next step lined up yet, and I know that that's what you're wanting to see, councillor DeAndrati, but I, I don't think it's, I don't know if the timeline really works to say, like, let's wait for the, we could just, like, I guess maybe the timeline would work if we don't do the communications campaign right now. Instead, we look at clear bags and other options to then inform the communications campaign later, if we, so that we can make a decision on that first. So we could take that step instead of doing the communications, if that's what, I think maybe that's, but I think the CAO has a suggestion, maybe based on this, so go to him.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to be realistic about that the campaign is going to solve this issue of, that's been longstanding. The campaign is primarily to encourage people to, obviously to recycle more, but the threshold, no pun intended, to, the threshold to find somebody for throwing recyclers is quite high. And so we'd have to have a lot of evidence of, have a bag and repeat offense, and seems to me like a lot of effort for an issue that, and it's important, but it's, I don't want to put all our eggs into that one bin. So I, that more of a caution, so we've got different options to encourage people to recycle more. And I would say that across the coast, we're one of the ones that are doing the better, which doesn't mean that we shouldn't continue to move forward on encouraging more of that. But we'll talk to the contractors, we'll have a discussion here, and maybe my suggestion is that we, we send out to council a couple of draft options to make sure we got the tone right in the, what you want to see as a communication, but I, I think we have to do a little bit of both and not focus all on, because the challenge with saying, if you, if you throw out too much recyclables, we're going to fine you, is, then it's not clear exactly how we're going to fine people, and for how much, and then people, you know, the whole fine thing is complicated, because, and rightly so, people have the right to dispute it, and if they dispute it, it gets into a different mechanism. So it's, I just want to, don't want to put too much emphasis on a, on a strategy that might not actually move the aisle too much. might not actually move the dial too much, but.
I've got a whole bunch of hands up. Was there one over here? Okay. Counsel Croll.
Thank you, Mayor White. These days you don't get that much for $6,000. And, you know, I, I'm really comfortable with communications, working with staff and the service providers, that they come up with something. We've got utility bills are going to be coming out fairly shortly. And people do forget, you know, people tend to take the path of least resistance and putting everything in one big bag and putting it out every other week, quick and easy. So I think if, if, you know, we can do something cost effective with the money that's been proposed within the $6,000, and, and just remind people that there is a bylaw, there are potential fines, and, you know, the, the clear, and then we get information back on the clear bag option. I'm quite happy leaving it to our capable staff to come up with something. And if they want to provide us with a draft, fine, but I'm not really worried about it.
Counsel D'Andretti?
It's just a question, Mayor, because I heard here the word enforcement. So now I'm trying to understand, is enforcement, enforcement possible or not?
I think it was described earlier. I mean, I think it was described in, in detail by our Director of Finance of how it's done right now.
No, it's not done. It's, there's a formula, but it's not happening. That's my, what I understood. Could, could we clarify that?
No, it was clarified. It was clarified.
It's not happening.
Yeah, I, I don't think it happens very often. It, it, it can't by that long process. I mean, I, I don't know what you're suggesting, Director, or Counsel D'Andretti, you're saying that, because if, if council, I'm not hearing, I hear your concern.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not hearing a consensus around, let's start directing our bylaw enforcement officers to do spot checks in people's garbage every morning, random checks. I, I don't, I don't think there's comfort in that. I don't think it's done anywhere else.
Mayor.
Because that, I mean, that would be a really, how else, if you're suggesting something else, what, what would it look like?
No, what I was suggesting is to have a meeting so we understand what's possible. That's what I suggested.
That's what's possible.
What?
I mean, and then, and then we're asking for transparent bags, and we're asking for what's possible. We're going to get a report back on that. I did say, I, I tried to address your, your concern 15 minutes ago or so by saying, let's just add the words, and more options to the, to the report.
Okay.
But we've got sidetracked, so that's not coming up anymore. Counsel Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Mayor, if with the recommendation of Schedule D, the, the charges 10% increase, what is the rough estimate cost per household based on that 10% per year?
I thought it was $24. I mean, are we, are we still looking at, it's the same thing, $24?
Yeah, Mayor White, I can, I can, I can clarify. So the overall increase would be 9%, and it would include the $6,000. And it's on this very sheet here, which is page 10 of 41. And the combined annual fee to a household would be $287 per year.
Up from 263.
Yes.
So if my math is wrong, then someone else do it.
No, thank, thank you for that math.
I just.
Thank you. Yeah.
We have a motion on the table. Any more discussion on it? All those in favor? The motion carries. And we will move on to water rates. It's page five. Oh, no, options are on page five of the report. The, the report's page 11. I'll go to Director of Finance to introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor White. I just want to point out that the water and sewer reports and schedules and everything mirror one another. So we should be able to go through the water methodically, and then you should find that with the sewer, it's just, we, we've, we've changed some of the figures a bit, but we should be able to flow through that part fairly quickly. So turning to the report itself, page 11 of 41, notes are, or highlights, town water services are budgeted and paid for on a full cost recovery basis. So we need to get operating and the capital costs over the full life cycle, the capital costs, gathered and funded. And at the bottom of that page, the current 5% overall annual increases in water revenues are not enough to cover the operating costs and to fund water infrastructure sustaining capital expenditures in the near term. And near term for me is, well, starting before five years is over and definitely out in the five to 10-year range. An overall revenue increase of 10% per year for three years would help address the funding gap. The challenge, of course, with funding and rates for really long-term ventures like these utilities, that like their collection of assets on average have an 80-year life cycle, is you're working, you're increasing revenues, you believe you've got it set, and then the costs on your infrastructure change again or something else happens. But the important part is always trying to be generating revenues that will cover operating and capital. Turning to the next page of the report, so this is page 12 of 41. The materials, the numbers that have been prepared, though, are based on the 5% cost escalation strategy that the town has been on for some time. In terms of preparing, updating this budget, the management team reviewed and reorganized water budget line items, important for council to know. So we took the envelope of money we'd already been given, and we really shuffled the deck a lot. And the reason we did that was to better match how the utility currently operates and to some extent, management of the utility feels there's further changes to come in terms of how it should operate. Usually when these reshuffling exercises happening, happen, councils are then asked for large chunks of additional money for that, and that's not the case here. And, and part of the reason for that was not that management were magicians, it was just that there were significant amounts of money added to the utility budget, water and sewers in the past because there were shortages of key operator staff, and it all had to be contracted out for a while. But the staffing has settled down and all the qualified people the town needs are on staff. And there's no need to be keeping that money at least up in the operating budget. It should be flowing through to cover debt and then flowing through to go into reserves for capital projects. So let's visit attachment A. And just, oh, went too far, which is, where's that? Page 17 of 41. So I'd just like to point out a couple of things. So in the top right, proposed budget, there's the historical increase 5%, and all these revenue calculations are based on that 5%. But if you look over on the left here, it says 1% equals $22,246. And that's important. If you're trying to raise another $100,000 or provide another $100,000 a year for capital, rates will have to go up 5%. So we'll use that as a reference tool a bit la, later. Then, just coming down in the, the second section, in, the town has had a solid accounting function for a long time. And here we can see that in prior years, there were cost allocations over to the sewer and water utilities for all the different stuff and IT and office space and so on required to run the water utility. Staff this year have detailed that out a bit more. So now we have a breakdown of salaries, wages, information technology and communications, relevant office space for this, insurance is split out as well. And when you look at the work of the director last year versus the director this year, those numbers are almost the same. It's, it's just having the, I like to have the breakout for everybody to see. There's a number of oranges going on throughout this, and if we just use aquifer wells and reservoirs, the actual time spent wages, $186,000 in 2024, while we're budgeting $88,000, and it's reflective of this thinking of where staff should be spending their time or where there's confusion with staff on where they're charging their time. It's important to get those things right. So we'll run a, a process to get that straight, because while it's down $100,000 here, you head over to pumping and distribution and we're planning, you know, $100,000 more there is where the, the time should be going. Okay, so we, we run through all of this section that we're running through is the operating budget. And we get down to this bit here, base budget expenditures. So how much does it cost me year in, year out to, to run the operations there? And we're, we're going from actual in, 2024 was $1,300,000, and we're, we're heading to a planned budget of $1,400,000. So it's not that the 25 budget's going down over what we spent before, but in our budget work together, we're strongly looking at, well, what did you budget in the past and what's going ahead? So in 2024, the budget went up 10%, and here we are in '25, it's going down 9%. And that's what I referred to before of, there was a lot of extra money provided and now it's coming back out. So down at the bottom here is where the, the listed operating projects for water are, and there's only two of them. I believe you're familiar with both. One is the aquifer protection regulation. We'll have further work in this year, $21,000. And then in 2026, the water master plan update will begin. Both of those were in prior year lists. And that pretty much ends the operating budget. And this line we're particularly interested in, it's cash basis. So in, based on the 25 budget, before water pays for its debt, services its reserves, maybe uses current money to pay for capital projects, there's, there's almost $950,000 And let's just, since this is working well, it appears, great. So what are we going to do with the $950,000 cash? Well, the first thing is paying debt. Just stepping back into the report for a moment, and this is page 13 of 41, but I, I, I'm not sure you, you need to look at the material. I just wanted to flag for both water and sewer and all of the debt activity of the town, the town's theoretical total debt limit going forward, it's not quite there yet, but it's about $30 million. And keeping things simple, and that would cost $3 million a year to service, principal and interest. So the town has four areas that are great candidates for issuing debt. One's the water utility, the next is a sewer utility, drainage, whether it is or not a utility, is another place for debt. And then there's the general fund that might be borrowing for roads or things like that, buildings. So if you've got 30 million in total and you feel, and it's not such a bad analogy that, okay, that should be shared around, that would be $7.5 million available to each. So in water, we're in the, we're in the neighborhood, again, to keep things simple, of about $5 million issued by this spring. And when that happens, town water debt is already significant with a debt service burden of $562,000 per year by 2026. Over a 10-year period and moving that around, what that will allow you to do is maybe two water main replacements at an average cost of $2.5 million a year. So one of those projects every five years is the capacity that water could have. And just, again, to give you a feel, the replacement value of all the water assets right now is around 60 million. So it's like, well, that's nice, but debt's only going to help for a very small part of, of that. I'd like to take us back to the schedule now. Again, 19, page 19 of 41. Here's skyline, there's the principal and interest. So it's adding $175,000 service cost, I think that one's 20 years, $175,000 a year. So while we got the money and we spent it, we haven't pulled new revenues in to pay for it. So it's, it's essentially a one-time 8% increase in water rates is required to fund that, because if you don't, it just chews up a big chunk of the money that you were saving up in reserves Is, I'm, I'm just hoping, I just want to check in that everyone is following this part, because we're going to a next step, which is really important. Okay. So this is page 14 of 41 of the report, and it starts driving towards whether there's sufficient cash. So here we are, we've paid all of these different water debt items in the top left there, and we have in '25, 2025, we have just over $500,000 left after debt service. And if we go down a little bit further, where we're transferring this money places, we see the line item of $400,000. And I just, which is, which is good. And then the, the remaining amount there, essentially there should be about $100,000 a year going to the operating reserve accounts, which is the place money goes to live for when you want to have a water master plan update and all those kinds of water projects that occur from time to time. So $400,000, the money that is being charged right now based on the 5% historical increases in revenues can fund $400,000 into reserves. So page 4 of 6 of the report, it refers to reserves contributions. So it starts up top, it says, "The current replacement scenario for the water utility's existing assets projects replacing $60 million of assets over 60 years." So, okay, a million a year. Now, down in reserve contributions, "The current 5% revenue escalation is generating sufficient funding for current debt coverage and, over '25 to '29, $400,000 annual contributions to the water capital reserve." And that's the minimum. The fact that the town's funds work this way and we got this far reflects to me that that model you saw every year that was trying to figure out how much should be going was targeting this, this number. And there's some key assumptions going on behind that that everyone needs to be aware of. So it's great that it's achieving this minimum retracted requirement. Unfortunately, this is unlikely to be enough, given the project funding assumptions that underlie that figure. So that $400,000 is just part of the million, 40%. So it assumes that 40% of the money will be grant funded, which is tricky. Will enough of these existing assets require upgrades or expansions? Because only if you have those can you make them interesting enough to the senior governments to get the money. So a number of them won't meet that. Like, replacing water main does not get the province or candidate excited. But upgrading your sewer plant and having certain results come from that, maybe you're covering off increased population for housing, maybe your effluents way better and meet some like stricter requirement, that, that's a place you can get a grant. This assumes 20% debt funding. Well, unless all of the money was made of the debt capacity was made available to water, Well, unless all of the money was made of the debt capacity was made available to water, it's not going to get that much debt.
Sorry, Director, I just want to break up this by allowing some questions here too because I've got some people asking.
Can I go one step further and then I'll stop?
One step further, but then we should get the...
Because we're almost there.
Okay, okay.
On something that's quite tricky. So underlined is, okay, we have $60 million replacement value, that's great. And roughly speaking, that's three times the historical cost of the assets. Not that many years ago, it was two. Then we had COVID, the supply chain, all of that, costs went up a huge amount. Now the rule of thumb is three. And we have 60 years average remaining life on our 80-year system. So it's got a lot of life in it. So we do need a million dollars a year. And currently, we're calculating at 40. And I would suggest, if we looked at a few other items, we haven't looked at capital projects yet for water, the town really needs to be closer to the 60% level. And how would it get there? Well, it can't get there in one go. But if you raised rates, taxes, whatever the tools are to increase revenues by 10% for three years, you would pretty much be there. And hopefully, that would be good. And then you would stop increasing at 10% a year. And now I'll stop. Thank you.
So this is just going back to what the option is. Okay, okay. Well, that's good to know. I thought you were telling us we needed even more than the... Yeah, okay. Well, that makes it simpler. Counselor Lumley.
Okay, so the funding model for, I guess, capital projects, I know we just went through the DCC process. And if you look on your DCC schedule, every single building that gets built has a water component in the DCCs that are charged. So say the North Road, it was just approved, 42 units. That's about quarter of a million dollars in DCCs for water. Where does that money, like in this model, like where does that money go? Like that, like of this, say your capital projects, I would only assume that the DCCs, which unless I'm missing something, I just don't, it's either debt funded, grant funded, or reserve funded. I'm just, my question is where the, how much gets funded through DCCs?
Good question.
And I have another question too, or maybe three or four.
Let's go to that one first.
Okay, so page 20 of 41 does have at the bottom of it, water deferred development charges. So that's what we've got right now. And in the five-year capital plan, we don't have anything except a small amount, I forget which project that is, we could visit that. We don't have anything lined up to take a lot of money out of there, but that's where it would come from. And a key point to what you were raising is, and that's wonderful, that let's hope we've collected enough for the DCC share. What about those projects where they say, oh, 50% the community, 50% the developer? Where's our 50% coming from? We're needing to make sure that we have in the capital reserve fund that money. And if we can build the revenues up, we could have a million dollars unrestricted surplus. And that's the place to go where like things, a DCC project happens much faster than expected. And the town hasn't had time to raise all that money and put it in capital reserve for its share. It would be able to go to the surplus and still be able to cover its share. So that surplus in the water utility is a really important contingency and a great place to provide options when you get surprises, good and bad surprises.
Director of Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mayor White. Just to follow up on that, another component to consider is of that $60 million that the Director of Finance identified as the replacement value, DCCs would contribute toward replacement of infrastructure that is under capacity right now. So anytime if we have water mains that are, say, undersized, provide fire flow, they need to expand a capacity to provide additional flow, they would be eligible to be covered by DCCs. Anything that is a, just a like-for-like replacement by size, so say it's currently at an appropriate capacity, needs to be replaced due to conditioning as it ages out, that wouldn't, the DCCs wouldn't contribute to that at all. And until our water master plan is updated, which I think was identified, is on the books for next year, it's hard for us to comment on kind of the percentage of the distribution system that is at an appropriate size right now to be able to kind of make an accounting for, say, 20% of that $60 million might be able to have contribution through DCCs. Until that master plan, I think after that, we might be able to refine the assumptions around how much DCC contribution is going to impact the replacement value.
Okay, Counselor Lumley had another question.
I have a, yeah, I have a kind of a geeky accounting question. I'm not sure why amortization, so if you're budgeting replacement and capital costs and all you're operating, these are actual cash numbers, and you're making your budget based on how much it's going to cost, I just wonder why the amortization, like a non-cash item, appears in the budget. I get it, it's an accounting thing and it appears on the financial statements, but like my understanding is when you're doing budgets, like we're just, we're kind of like budgeting for like actual dollars and cents that are going to be spent and raised. And I just wasn't sure why the amortization would be included in there.
Yes, Mayor White, there's a couple of reasons it's there. First of all, on the mechanics, it's to see what the whole operating budget, including capital would be. So the schedule says base budget expenditures, that's cash. Then it throws in this non-cash amortization. It gives you a feel for the annual operating costs. Its use there is just to throw the line in because if you're spending less than 366,000 or if you're not spending on capital projects, at least putting it away in reserves, I mean, that is your absolute bare bone reinvestment amount. In terms of carrying it forward in the schedule though, it's a little bit tricky, but when we get to the bottom, operating surplus, that operating surplus actually ignores the amortization. It was just to get it in there. I guess, yeah, it's a matter of preference. But it's better that it not be entirely lost so people can see, you know.
Yeah, on the face of things. It seems like we're double dipping, but that's okay.
But we're not.
Okay.
Yeah. That amortization is not part of the calculation for operating surplus cash basis at the bottom. It's been pulled out of there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, accountants. What do you have next, Counselor Lumley?
I wouldn't trick you that way.
That's it, for now, for now.
You were going to go deeper, weren't you? Yeah, down the rabbit hole. Any other questions on, on this, Counselor Dandretti?
Thank you, Mayor. I saw 10%, which is the best scenario, for three years. What is the impact if we do 7% for five years? We will reach the same figure, for example, just a little bit longer term, considering that everything is going up. Is there really a big negative consequence?
I think we talked about this, this is kind of how we did it last year, I think. But it probably wasn't, I think what we're hearing this year is probably not good enough. Go ahead, Director of Finance.
Through Mayor White, I mean, yes, it's possible to carry on at 5, it's possible to carry on at 7.5. But the current situation needs an immediate, much higher injection of cash, but just not forever. And that's where the 10% comes from. So in the recommendations, the choices there read, the best recommended course from staff, which is, hey, 10% for three years. And then the second one says, well, maybe you're not comfortable with that, how about, please, 10% at least for this next year and we can revisit this then? And then finally, yeah, other options for lower amounts. It doesn't really help us. We have both long-term and short-term challenges right now in terms of our financial position for the utility. The one lucky thing in water is right now, we don't have a treatment facility because that would just really be the crowning glory to have to fund that as well.
Counselor Croll.
Thank you, Mayor White. And thank you for the report, Director of Finance. It's, you know, I really appreciate the breakout you've given us where we can see a little more clearly where these dollars are being spent because it just helps clear the muddy water. I'm a great believer in short-term pain for long-term gain, so I'm leaning towards your supporting what you're asking for. And the other thing to consider, this increase is based on usage. So me sitting at home, if I use a little less water, it's, the impact isn't going to be there. And the town has got a... Counselor Lumley, you're looking.
The impact is going to be there.
Yeah, but just to create a higher increase next year in the budget, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think it also advocates, there is a message there for water conservation, you know, because it is costing us money. So I appreciate the report and certainly prepared to support the request.
Go with that. Counselor Lumley?
I guess, are we just weighing in on this, on the, are we?
I just want to clarify. Actually, with Counselor Croll, were you moving the option? Okay, and is there a second or? I'll second it. We'll discuss further. If other people have other options, let's hear them. Counselor Lumley?
Yeah, if I heard correctly, Mayor, we're going to know if these increases are accurate once the master plan has been released. Now, my question would be, is it possible to get the master plan update like sooner? I have a hard time just doubling the percentage for the next three years. I mean, I would have to take the director's word on it for this year, right? But I have a hard time making a plan to double it, like, or send it up to 10% for the next three years without the master plan update, that's all.
I'm just going to state, we'll go to staff too, but what I recall from last year, and that's that we got a very startling report from Infrastructure about how much inflation had gone up for infrastructure. And I remember looking at, I just remember the visual of it, of like a huge, huge bar going way up of how much. And so there was hard data supporting this. And at that time, our Director of Finance at that time had said, you're probably going to have to go up to 10. And we didn't. So we had that data last year. And that was her recommendation too, because she was already considering this, that like, we don't want to do this all at once, we need to probably take us, her recommendation was a softer approach, which is what we followed. But now we're, we all knew we're going to have to pay the piper this year. So I'm not surprised at all by this option, the option one. This was broadcast by data last year, and I don't, I didn't hear that we're still waiting for more, but I'll go to staff to confirm that. I'll go to Director of Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mayor White. Just to Counselor Lumley's question about the water master plan, given the state of the OCP update, the status of that update, and the critical role that that will have in making projections for future service capacity needs as far as water supply and storage and fire protection, I would be certainly strongly recommending that that be complete first. That's kind of the logic behind the timing of proposing the master plan for 2026 is allowing the OCP to complete and then basing the update to the master plan on the projected population from the OCP update. Yeah, I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, but maybe the Director of Finance will answer this. Is that, are you saying, are you saying that our water rate, we have to wait for our water rates until, I don't think that's what you're saying. Let's clarify that.
We've stumbled onto an apple and orange, this discussion. So the water master plan will help you figure out what your priorities are of all your choices and the state of affairs and all of that. Wonderful. We already know envelope-wise how much total money we need to fund whatever the water plan tells us we should do of our many choices. But we need to get going on it now, like we don't have time to wait out there. And this requires really us to go and visit. Well, we won't visit, I'll just let you know. So the capital projects, we went by that in our discussion so far. But it has been stripped down to either what's going on in '25 and things, we don't know what will come out of that, but many of those projects in '25 will trigger projects in future years. We don't have any of that stuff in here for those years yet. And we've only left for years '26 out to '29, things that are critical. And there'll be a lot of repopulating and even more repopulating and readjusting with the water plan.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I would just like to ask the Director of Infrastructure a really tangible question here that might help counsel. So I just saw an example this morning. Like we, I think, we're still waiting to find Skyline. And I think that's because costs have gone up and it's harder. I mean, that's what we've been hearing for the last year. And now a resident just asked about McCall, which was in, which was in the 2025 plan. Now that's getting bumped because we're still doing Skyline and we don't have the funds to do it, right? Like I just, and this is because we're not raising enough funds to fund these projects. Like I just want to give, rather than kind of going theoretical into the future and a water plan, like right now, aren't these tangible examples of how we don't have, we're not putting, raising enough funds to pay for projects that are even in our current plan?
Yeah, so to the mayor, to that question, so Skyline Drive, the delay in that one completing is just due to some of the complexity with the engineering of it, it's a bit of a complicated water main replacement. That's the time delay in that, the reason for bumping McCall Lane, so the reason why McCall Lane isn't being shown as the capital project in, say, 2026 or 2027 is with the impending master plan for the water system, that'll be our opportunity to reassess or, because there may, out of the reevaluation of the master plan, updating and modeling, we may find that there are some critical water mains which are under capacity right now. We know that McCall Lane is, it's a bit of a condition, it's aging out. So there's reasons for us to do that one, but rather than show it in here and then update the master plan and then remove it from the project list again, and avoiding the issue which has come up through a resident identifying that it was in the plan last year and now it's not in the plan, wanting to avoid that scenario and kind of shift the projections out. We want to wait, update the master plan, and then we have kind of a, it's our guidebook for the next, you know, 10 years of asset replacement and upgrade. And to the point about the financing, Skyline Drive, we needed to go up for an AAP to fund that due to the cost and due to the lack of our reserves. Likely, given the scale of McCall Lane, if we were to attempt to do it in the next couple of years, we would also require debt funding to pay for that as well. This is a mechanism which will ideally allow us to complete these, just, there's really nothing exceptional about it, Skyline being an exception because of the bedrock, but just, you know, just routine water main replacement through means other than debt, which is a very precarious position for financially the utility to be operating.
Yeah, I agree. Skyline does make some sense. McCall, I, that's surprising that we'd have to go for, we'd need to go for debt in order to pay for something that seems routine, street like that. Further discussion on this? The motion is before us. Took a while to get a second or, so I don't want to, if people are still uncomfortable with this, say it now. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? The motion barely passes, like... The motion barely passes, like, okay, it passed though. So, I mean, I wish we, if we're not in favor of it, we can come up with alternative options here, but it did pass. So, and we're in committee, so it'll come to council as well. Now looking at, Councilor Lumley?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor, but I did, I, I responded, I told you what I thought, and it wasn't what was, what was moved by Councilor Kroll, so I don't know what else you'd want a counselor to do. I just said I wasn't comfortable with a 30% increase when we, we don't even have a master plan that's been updated. That, that was just my question, and, and it was kind of half true and half not true, but being half true, I, I don't know what else I could have said. I guess I just feel uncomfortable asking for 30% or making a plan for the future, which is quite costly to the taxpayers without, like, maybe without all the information, but I was quite happy to do it this year with the current information. That's all my point was. So I thought I made my point, so sorry.
Okay, yeah, I just, I don't know what the alternative would be. I guess we'd be staying at 5%.
No, not increasing it by 10% next year, that'd be 20%.
Yeah.
Mayor White, if I, if I just, yeah, for, for the, for the committee's comfort, so the, the recommendation has said, yeah, go ahead and raise rates 10% for three years. That's as much intended for the community and the public to know that's the direction that things are heading, but of course, next year, council will see information and may choose at that time to say, okay, we agree, or new information, we disagree.
We cannot lock in next year's budget decision-making. This is, this is like a five-year kind of capital plan thing. It's like, this is what, this is what the plan is for, for the next three years, but...
But it's really helpful.
If council wants to raise it or lower it to zero next year, we can do that. Or, Councilor Kroll?
Just for clarification, and thank you, Mayor White, as the Director of Finance indicated, they're, they're being given a broad scope of direction that we are prepared to be faced with a 10% increase each year for the next three years. But as the Director said, things may change between now and this time next year, and we may be looking for dealing with a whole new deck of cards or be in a better situation, you know, but I think staff need to be given the option to know that they can at least plan this far.
Councilor Thompson?
But what we do know is the debt load that we're carrying, and that was clearly outlined, so that was an important point that I was considering in my vote.
Okay, on to sewer rates. Page 27 of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor White. The situation in sewer is, is not as good as, as it is in water. Water has its challenges, but sewer is really challenged. So again, the town's sewer services are budgeted and paid for on a full-cost recovery basis operating at capital. The current 5% overall annual increases in sewer revenues, and I appreciate the efforts were made to increase it beyond that rate last year, we'll, we'll see that, are not enough to cover operating costs and to fund sewer infrastructure sustaining expenditures in the near term. Revenue increases of 10% per year for the next five years would help address the capital funding gap. The information has, the schedules, the financial figures have been prepared based on escalating at 5%. In 2024, the actual increase in budget revenues turned out to be 6.43. I'm not sure that's exactly what was intended when it was planned, but it was intended that it'd certainly be more than 5%. As in water, management went through the budget and within the existing budget envelope, shuffled a lot of things around the budget lines and came up with a similar result as water. A 9% came out of the operating budget requirements and available to pay debt and service the In 10, in terms of, we skipped over projects last time, the only capital project of great note in the current five-year plan is the $6 million outfall replacement project in '27, '28, and that assumes a 60% grant. So a lot of preparatory work has been going on there and continues to go on there, but the, the current indication is that that project will be in the $6 million range. So the project lists have been revised just as they were in water. All the 25 ones that have been previously approved have carried forward. Many of them, when they're complete, will have follow-on work to be done. There are others that might be put back in, but the, the new, the newly formed infrastructure group need the opportunity to digest all of the information the town has collected to sort out what in their team view are the next places to go. So when they really have conviction and on the finance side, we can figure out how to fund those things, they'll go back into the five-year financial plan. They, they haven't disappeared, it's just a temporary cleanup. So I won't go too far into the debt, because this is exactly the same section as last time in water, and in this area, sewer is better off. So town sewer debt is moderate, it has a debt service burden of $365,000 starting in 2026. It's got the same kind of outlook, it could have $7.5 million in debt if we shared amongst all the town areas, and that debt servicing would cost 750. So if they're at 365 right now, they could probably borrow $6 million if something came up that that was absolutely the best or only way of, of funding it. If we turn to page 30 of 41, and that gets back to this estimate of, well, how much money is going into reserve and what should be needed? The result, it's exactly the same methodology, and so I'll just go through the results. So the current replacement value of the, of the sewer utilities' existing assets is about $55 million over about 50 years. So it's another almost a million a year, or a little over a million a year. So at, if we keep escalating sewer revenues at 5% a year, it's not generating sufficient funding for current debt coverage. So forget about putting any money in reserves, it's not going to pay the debt, or all of And, no, I think I've confused the matter here. It's not going to pay debt and it's not going to cover for, it will pay debt, but it will not be able to cover the estimated $440,000 in annual contributions to the Waterburs Capital Reserve Fund. The way that number fell out again is, I wouldn't be surprised if that's consistent with the prior year models that have been run. So we have the same challenges with project funding assumptions, even if we had $440,000 being available to save each year. There's a big assumption about a lot of grant funding, there's a big assumption that it could borrow much more than its share of town activities, and in its case, it doesn't have a sufficient base of money already in reserve or surplus. So a safer contribution would be more at the $660,000 level rather than the 440, and that would increase, require increases of 10% per year instead of 5 for five years. And I would just like to visit with you one of the schedules. So here, okay. Here we are, operating surplus, and in, yeah, there it is. And in 2025, we have $661,000 coming out, so it's, it's sounding good so far. Then we go and pay debt of $278,000, which is going to rise to the 365, and we've got about $380,000 left for debt service. So that's below the 440. So here, here are the yellows saying, wow, our minimum planning isn't working. Unfortunately, it gets worse from there, because out here is the sewer outfall project that probably Fisheries and Ocean will complain if the town doesn't keep moving that project forward. And if we go down into this table, which is page 36 of 41, so if you can see 36 of 41, you'll see that, well, not only do we have the yellows of not enough money available for the $440,000, which is still showing going into the Capital Reserve Fund here, but when we run into the challenge of funding that project, we're going to be negative $309,000 here in 2028. And of course, how would we pay for that? Well, that's where we'd run to the surplus fund and take that out of the $580,000, but we'd have nothing left in, in, in surplus and nothing left in, in Capital Reserve, and we've only tackled one project. In, in the sewer world, of course, sure, there's a, a bunch of other work going on, you can see it in this line here in, in sewer, but reflecting that that's a bare-bones project list for five years right now, something else is going to come up there that's going to require money. There is enough time to borrow, because these things were a few years out, but it's really challenging. And at the end of the day, the message is, hmm, you need more revenues going in there to meet the needs of this utility. And I'll leave it there. Mayor White?
Okay, council. Counselor DeAndretti?
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the outfall replas, replacement, is it a candidate for DCCs?
Director of Infrastructure?
Through the mayor, without having the DCC program in front of me, which I actually probably have in my bag, it would be, to a percentage of it, I would, I would assume it would be in the 30 to 50% DCC eligible, because it's a, it's a combination of capacity and condition, so there's a metric that gets used to allocate.
Thank you, Mayor White. I think, you know, when we talk about DCCs, we also have to consider, if projects don't happen, we don't collect the DCCs. So it's fine to say 30% of the project could be DCCs, but if nothing happens, you know, we've got numerous projects that are sitting on the books and they're just sitting there. We haven't collected the DCCs, so, you know, it's sort of counting your chickens before they hatch.
Counselor Lumley?
Then we should change the whole program, because we're making, we're budgeting for possible grants, possible this, possible that. We have to say DCCs, we're approving projects, we have to include the option or the suspected DCCs. I don't know if projects are going to go ahead, or I don't know if we're ever going to get grants, you know? I don't know if we'll be able to borrow, none, none of that knows. I know it's just a budget, but I think it has to be in the, it has to be, it has to, you know, we can't, I bet you if the projects don't go ahead and we don't have DCCs, well then I bet, I would assume, I would only assume that you're just going to have to charge more. That's, you know, that's what I'm saying. And the, the water one too, it's just like, it's tough when you're making budgets for, for the future, especially when you're, when you're discussing, you know, massive increases in people's taxes and water rates and stuff. I get it, it's a tough one, but, yeah, you're just projecting the future. Nobody knows what's going to happen in the future, but that's why I like to keep it a little bit more current, rather than freaking people out about potential increases in the future, when we don't know what the future holds. But I understand exactly what the budget process is, and CFO is doing his job, he does a good job, reports are, are good, and I can understand them, but sometimes it's a little scary when you, when you look at the numbers. I do have a question though, can I ask a question, Mayor?
No.
Okay, so this is, I'm going to really dumb this down, and it, it might be the dumbest question you've ever been asked, but if 5% results in the 440, would 10% result in 880? Because you said we should be shooting for 660. So based on the, I mean, it is, it is a stupid question, is that why you're nodding your head? Okay.
This is, this is good. So, I mean, we're on the 5% train, and, and on the 5% train, we, let's, to keep it really simple, say that that's $400,000 instead of 440. It's like, well, how do I get from $400,000 to $600,000? That's another $200,000. Well, here was the 1% increase in rates gets you 21.5. So again, to keep that simple, it basically means that, okay, if I do another 5% for this year, that'll get me another $100,000. And then the following year, if I do an additional 5 on the 5, that'll get me another 100. So, okay, turning it back to this example, 440 to 640. But even with, even with those additional monies coming in early, looking at the challenges of the other projects, you, you can see that even the 640 won't, won't be enough, that it has to, it has to increase beyond that. Exactly to what we're not certain, but I would say we're pretty certain that we need that extra boost of an extra $100,000 each year for five years, and then hopefully, when infrastructure updates the priorities for sewer, we will see just enough cash in hand, DCC money, surplus reserves, plus debt capacity to cover the town off over the next five to 10 years. And that's the most we can do with long-term financial planning. So, I mean, I, I know it's very hard to ask people to accept an outlook of 10% rates for five years, but I do honestly believe the town would get somewhere that would be a much better place in sewer. And with, there hasn't been any luck in recent years, it's time maybe there's some luck the other way.
Counselor DeAndretti?
Well, I would move the alternative one. We raised 10% this year, and next year, we better understand, because when we were discussing the other motion, even though we, council voted three consecutive years, that it's going to come back to the table anyways for discussion. So I rather, so I'm moving this one, alternative one.
Yeah, it says, sorry, I've got two alternatives, it says alternative one and alternative two. So I...
Alternative one.
Okay. So not the alternative to the alternative. I think, yeah, so that's alternative one. I'm confused by this too.
This is the second paragraph.
I think I'm...
It's 10%, but it's not contemplating for five years, and next year, we will discuss again, could be 11% the need, could be 12. I don't know. It just, again, I, I feel uncomfortable doing five consecutive years, it just, because, yeah, everything is increasing, I feel more comfortable just doing for this year, so I just need a second.
Yep. Yeah, I'm just trying to look at where the, the recommendation was, because I, I see the...
Page 31.
Okay. It's 31. I see the alternatives.
Alternative one.
Ah, okay, there's one above alternative one, I guess, is what I'm, we're looking at, yeah, okay. So alternative, alternative one is, yeah, it doesn't say recommended or not recommended, but it's there. It's, it's, it's not, it's, seems feasible. So is there a second or for that? Do we know which one we're talking about?
Paragraph two.
Yeah, it's, it's under alternative one, which is that the sewer parcel taxes be amended and the current fees and charges by law 1196 Schedule C, sanitary and storm sewer rates, fees and charges be amended to increase 2025 parcel taxes and user charges by 10% following the existing burden. the existing burden sharing methodology. So that does not have a second or. So where are we going? Does someone have another? Counsel Thompson?
I'm going, oh, sorry. First paragraph.
Okay. So this is the one, this, I think, I'm not going to say all that over again because I just get confused. Basically, what we're talking about is 10% for five consecutive years.
As a budget layout.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
10% for five consecutive years, seconded by Counsel Kroll. Discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Discussion. Sorry.
Are you, you're going to do the thing where you, I thought you were Gates talking about it after the vote.
I had some clarity on, on the reserve.
You're doing like a point of order to interrupt things. I'll take it, I'll take it as that. A point of order, what do you have to say? What do you have to say?
I just, I wondered if I could just get some clarity on the reserve, the proposed budget reserve to and from reserves, like opening to and from in the, in the, like in the opening balance, closing balance. I just wanted to get some clarity on that, that's all. Because from reserve and then from reserve, and then to reserve and from reserve. That's all. I just wanted to maybe.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor White. Page 36 of 41 summarizes the money going in and out of a reserve. Now behind that is this sheet, sewer utility capital projects. And on the top part of this sheet are all the sources of funding for projects. Down the bottom here, we have the projects they're going to pay for. So for example, in column one, we've got projects to pay for of 2,245,000. Up here, we have revenues to pay for them. And they're up there, we look up here and say, okay, that's nice, sewer operating reserve is going to contribute 260,000 to these, and capital reserve 60. So if I go back over here to the sheet, there's a sewer capital reserve fund, 60,000 coming out of the fund to pay for a project. And then up top here in the operating reserve account, we have 260,000 coming out of that reserve for capital projects. And that's the connection between them.
Okay.
So yeah, there, we, we have backup for the ins and the outs.
Okay, are we ready to vote now? And do you have any points about that, further information, anyone? So we're looking at that first option that was there, 10% over five years. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Anything more? We had some next steps in some of these. One was for, yeah, maybe, maybe let's outline those next steps in these, these reports here.
Yes, Mayor White. There, these bylaws have to be read and adopted in March, at least the fees and charges parts. And actually, no, parcel do as well. So there is a scheduled meeting of council on March the 18th, so that would take care of the readings. And then there is a gap. It's proposed here that a special council meeting on March the 25th would be called, and that's because that day council has a committee of the whole scheduled, and we would ask to throw this essentially administrative meeting just for the purposes of adoption. And then we would have fulfilled getting these bylaws in force before April 1st, which is the start of a utilities billing cycle.
Okay, so just for adoption. Okay, so we'll look at that at agenda setting. And then we'll probably be at a, I think that, that would be necess, we do have to have the three readings separated from adoption in this case, yeah. So, yeah. Okay, so the next committee of the whole meeting is also on March 18th at 1:00 PM. And we need to adjourn. Moved by Counsel Kroll, seconded by Counsel DeAndretti, all those in favor? The motion carries. Were there any opposed to adjourning? I don't think so. So, yeah, the motion carries.
Thank you, committee.